To watch this meeting via Zoom. First item on the agenda, Madam Clerk, would be the roll call. You be so kind.
Harry McGee.
Yeah.
Greg LaBosse-Air.
Here.
Gary Cody.
Here.
Ann Dixon.
Yes.
Deb Bacon.
Here.
The next item is if everybody would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and I will lead. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next item on the agenda will be the approval of the Town Council minutes from September 14th, 2020. We've had a chance to look at them. Is there any questions or comments concerning them? If none, the Chair will entertain a motion.
I make a note of that. Go ahead, Gary.
Do we have a motion?
I have a motion to accept the minutes. Thank you.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Madam Clerk, roll call, vote please.
Harry McGee.
Yes.
Greg LaBosse-Air.
Yes.
Gary Cody.
Yes, ma'am.
Ann Dixon.
Yes.
Deb Bacon.
Yes.
Thank you.
A motion carries minutes approved. Next item on the agenda was presentation by the School Committee, Building Committee, I'm sorry, School Building Committee. Mr. Wazika, do we have somebody here for that presentation?
We do. We have Mr. Luke Murray from the School Department, School Committee. Luke, do you need to share your screen?
I will, just for a moment, so if you can take a quick look.
It's all yours, Luke. Thank you for coming tonight and giving us.
All right. Thank you very much. Wanted to give you, as I stated in our previous discussions, I wanted to keep the council updated on the building committee's progress, how we're doing. We have a very strict schedule for the Stage Two Ride Building process. So since, I'll give you a rundown what we've done since our last update. We've had a couple of committee meetings. One of those meetings, we did have a vote to prioritize our projects moving forward. The committee felt strongly, as I iterated in our previous update, that the middle school was priority. And so we're looking at the potential of a major renovation or addition or other at the middle school as our primary focus for a Stage Two effort. The committee has also pledged to look at other facilities for what we call Priority One elements. So those would be things like HVAC, roofs, critical items for warm, safe, and dry. So the idea here is to have sort of a model project, something that we can really advance in the town. And the middle schools have been identified as a core facility for many reasons. But one of them is that's a kind of a point where parents have to make the decision whether they're going to stick with our school system or go elsewhere. And we felt it's imperative at this point that we provide a 21st century learning environment for that. Going through, so we did have a walkthrough that we conducted this past weekend, this past Saturday. I do want to thank all those who did attend, including Ms. Ann Dixon, who is on the committee. We spent four hours going through the facilities. Couple of things that were evident was that our facilities, you know, it's not just about the quality of the spaces. And I say that to mean that the quality is more than just the condition of the HVAC, condition of the roof. It's the quality of the learning environment as it sits today. So today's learning environment is very, very different than 30 or 40 years ago. So I do want to commend our custodians and staff who really have, if you are able to watch the video, which I did send out, I believe, to all councilors here today. If you do take a look at the video, you'll see that our facilities have been kept up. And we are keeping up with the roofs, we're waxing the floors, we're doing the everyday things. The facilities are just old and they are not conducive to today's learning environment. In some ways, we do have things we've done, we valued engineered out through the years that probably should not have. One of those is some of the HVAC units that we really could use right now in the current environment. So I have provided those videos. You should have received an email. If you did not, reach out to me. I'd be glad to share those links. It is on the YouTube, Coventry YouTube page for viewing by the public as well, and I will share that out. What else do I have here? So we're, as I noted before, we're working with a consultant on our Stage Two. We are moving forward that consultant and the team, the team's next task, and I will share the schedule right now. And just let me know if you can see the schedule come up.
You can see it, Luke.
Okay, great. So as you can see, we've had the building tour. We're on schedule with that. We've actually stuck to a pretty, pretty good as far as our schedule, given the current environment. The structural analysis is underway. That is just basically an evaluation by O'Day Structural Engineers to look at all our school facilities to ensure that we're not missing anything. Because as I said before, Ride doesn't want to approve a project then have a roof fall in at one of the facilities. So that's going to be done, actually is in progress. We have a couple of building committee meetings scheduled. This upcoming meeting will be reviewing some alternatives for the middle school. We have already reviewed some alternatives that the architect had presented. We expect some, the feedback was less than probably what was wanted by the architect, but that's okay. That's part of the process. So they've committed to come back and present even more. Actually, tomorrow night, we'll be having a meeting. So as you can see, we have a couple of meetings before the next Town Council update. We'll be working on educational specifications. And then we also are trying to schedule a meeting with Ride, the School Building Authority, to have them walk the schools, which is a requirement under the Stage Two guidelines. So we will be doing that as well. I have been reaching out to Ride on a regular basis to provide updates and, and just basically keep them in the loop, which was something that was recommended by our architect. And let's see. I think that's it for now. The big thing to, it's important to know is we are proceeding. We're on schedule. I'll keep giving these updates, and if you have any questions at this time, I will entertain them.
Okay, first of all, I want to thank you very much, Luke, for doing that. And I see you are keeping a regular schedule. You're on schedule. We look forward to the next council update, and I'll make sure I make room for that on the 19th of October. Are there any council people who have any questions now, or you're waiting for the updates? Okay, Luke, once again, I don't see any questions. So I thank you very much for the hard work you guys are putting into this. And we'll move on to the next item.
Thank you.
B1. Madam Clerk, would you be so kind as to read that, please?
Resolution authorizing the interim Town Manager to award a contract with Fourleaf Incorporated, who is a professional service firm who specializes in providing plan review, project inspection, and on-call inspection services for authorization of building and planning inspection permits.
Okay, Mr. Manager, would you be so kind as to give us explanation?
Yes, this is, this is a continuation of a current contract that we've had with Fourleaf for the last several months. This is a longer-term duration. It's going to go until the end of this fiscal year, providing the building official services as well as ad hoc, as-needed fire, uh, fire, other services such as Building Inspector One, Building Inspector Two, Electrical Inspector, Mechanical Inspector, Plumbing Inspector, all the various aspects of what has to be done by the Building Official Department. This contract actually is $5 an hour cheaper than our short-term one where these funds are provided in the budget already under professional services. And I recommend that we, that the council approve this so we can continue the relationship we have with Fourleaf and continue the job they're doing, providing the building official as well as other inspection services that we need.
Okay, Mr. Wazika, you've been using these for probably the last six months, you know, the service for the last six months. You're very happy with the way that they've been producing?
Very happy. We've gotten, we've gotten, actually got compliments. Something we hadn't been getting for a while out of the Building Officials' office. So we've been getting some, some citizens that are happy with it. It's working out well, and I foresee continuing with this. I mean, the difficulty in hiring a building official is being faced by every community in the state. They're just not out there. And until that happens, we need, we need to provide the service. And this company is doing a great job of providing that service.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Does any council person have a question or concern? Okay, seeing none, the Chair, motion?
Motion for approval.
We have a motion for approval. Do we have a second? Ann.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. All in favor, Madam Clerk?
Harry McGee.
Yes.
Greg LaBosse-Air.
Yes.
Gary Cody.
Yes.
Ann Dixon.
Yes.
Deb Bacon.
Yes.
Okay, Gary's. Next item on the agenda is item B2. Madam Clerk, would you be so kind?
Recommendation to Town Council to authorize the final bond release for the falls at Scott Hollow Project located at 754 Victory Highway.
Okay, we've all had copies of this and I will pack it. And Mr. Wazika, do you have anything to add to it, or do you have anybody that wants to comment on this?
I have, I have Mr. Russell Crossman, the, the Planning Director, who sat in on the meeting where this was approved by the Planning Department. And I also have Mr. Rudy Prakashanti.
Disculpe.
Here, the, the applicant or receiver, the builder, in this case. So Russ, if you wouldn't mind just saying a few words on this, please?
Sure. The Falls at Scott Hollow, that, that is a, I believe it's an 18, it's a 19 lot. It's 18 buildable lots with an open space lot. It's on 102. On the right-hand side as you head north of 117. It's a private road. I think it first received its approval, I apologize, I don't have you at the packets I sent you in front of me, but they received their first approvals circa 2003. And they had asked for continuances, and they finally reached a point where they, they had their bond reduced. Then they posted a $92,000 bond. I spoke with Mr. Arnett about that. And then they, they've been making a couple of bond requests over the years. But in your packet, I gave you copies of staff reports from the Town Engineer, where he was not satisfied that all the work had not been done yet. So he went out there, I believe, on two separate occasions. I believe one was either in 18 or 19. Then he did another one in 2020. And then he wrote me a memo saying that he was satisfied that they were able to complete their obligations. And he was satisfied with the work that had been done, and he was recommending relief. That's all I have. Mr. Prakashanti is here. If you have any questions for him, he'd be more than willing to answer your questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Crossman. I did see there was some, some articles of concern that were addressed and everything is done. This bond is, goes back to the builder when everything meet, when he meets everything that's supposed to be done. So does any other council members have any questions, concerns?
Gary.
Okay, I see Gary Cody has his hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, so the, what we're saying at this point is that the project is substantially complete to the Building Inspector and Town Planner satisfaction, correct?
Losing sound.
It's complete to the Town Engineer's satisfaction. This bond was placed strictly for the infrastructure, for the roads and the stormwater. And that's what this bond was put there for. And the town, and it's not going to be a town road, by the way. It's a public, I mean, it's a private road. They don't do any trash pickup, and they don't do any snow plowing. But they still had, were required to post a bond. So the Town Engineer is satisfied that this road was built according to the proper professional design standards.
Thank you, Russell. Mr. President, with that being said, if no other council member has any questions, I would.
Mrs. Bacon have one? I think, I see Mrs. Dixon's hand up. I don't see, does Mrs. Bacon have a, okay, Miss, sorry, I can't get anybody on this one screen, so I'm flipping back and forth. So, Mr. Dixon, you had your hand up first. Do you want to, I have a question?
Yes, I do have a question. Based on the information in our packet, there were several times in which there was an inspection and the project did not pass. Now it has passed, and I want to know, continuing on, what is the town's role in making sure that things are up to standards that they need to be up to? Or do we just forget this project now that we released this bond?
Mr. Crossman, do you have an answer on that one?
Yeah, it's my understanding because it's a private road, after the bond is released, the town has no other role. And I refer to Mr. Prakashanti, but I'm assuming that this associate, they have a homeowners association who is now responsible for the maintenance and the upkeep of the road. And the town, for lack of a better term, you know, we washed our hands of this at this time. Mr. Prakashanti, would you like to comment on that? Rudy, can you hear us?
I think Rudy's frozen.
Okay. So yes, Mrs. Dixon, we will be playing no more role in this roadway.
Thank you. I was just wondering if there'd be any concerns moving forward by the residents, et cetera, and what our role would be. And you're telling me that we have no role. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dixon. I see Deb Bacon has a question, a concern?
Hi, thank you, Carrie. Yeah, I think my concerns were also with what Ann was bringing up because in the final inspection report dated December 16th, 2019, there were seven issues that were addressed. But then in the memorandum dated September 4th, 2020, it just, you know, it does say, "Recent inspections of the roadway and drainage system confirms they are complete." Did we ever get any of our questions answered in December 16, 2019 regarding the thickness of the roadway? I mean, we, are we satisfied with that, that that's a proper roadway that was installed? There was construction debris that was still there. Just making sure that that's all been removed.
Russell, do you have an answer to that one? I mean, I'm assuming that your inspection, that it met the questions, but I don't want to assume anything, so.
Yeah, because it didn't go into any detail regarding this. It didn't address all seven issues. It only, it just gives a little quick blurb. That is it. So I just want to make sure that all seven have been, you know, addressed and are satisfied.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bacon. President McGee, I personally do not go out and do these inspections. They're done by the Town Engineer, and then he provides me with the memo. I would have no reason to question, I don't know what was done, to be honest, with the thickness of the pavement. Rudy, can you hear us? He cannot. I, I cannot answer your question. I apologize for that. I just relied on his, on his memo, so.
Yeah, because they don't mention, they don't mention anything, you know, because they, they cannot verify the thickness of the surface course or if it was installed correctly. So I just want to make sure that this roadway was installed correctly.
All right, we have Mr. Prakashanti. He can hear us now. Rudy, can you hear us, sir?
Yes, I can, but I understand she just mentioned the roadway thickness?
Correct, sir.
That was all verified, I believe, along with Tom Miozy, the installer of the road.
Okay, all right, so it was verified from the, from the install then, and then.
Does the town though? Does the town have verification? We, you know, this memorandum doesn't say anything. I just want to make sure that, that, that we actually have verification.
Yeah, I believe Tom has it, and I believe the town, someone was out there with him at the time.
Yeah, I see Mr. Cody raising his hand. Have a comment?
Yeah, I was on that project. And the road was put down to state specifications with two courses, one of binder and one of top, with Cape Cod berm put all around the road. And the storm drains were raised to just below wa, road level to allow for drainage into all the storm drains. And with the Cape Cod berm in place, no water runoff from the road will penetrate onto any of the surrounding properties. And I believe, if I remember correctly, we had a representative of the town there with us while we were paving.
Okay, well, I mean, thank you for that information. And like Mr. Crossman said, we did have the engineer, sent him a letter verifying. So, I mean, I know we didn't go into detail on every one, but I'm sure he looked at every one because that's what the letter, the original statement said. So I don't have any reason to doubt him either, but here again, the responsibility in the future goes on the homeowners association and the builder, so the town doesn't have any more responsibility, so. You have all the faith in the world, and you have inspected that one out there, I mean, your engineer that looked at it. Russ, is he here?
I'm sorry. I, I know he went out there. I know he's gone out there multiple times. I was not out there. I have not, the, the only discussion I have had with him is through this memo. So can I, I, I mean, I was satisfied with the memo. I didn't think he needed to expound on it anymore. But I, I can't say, you know, what happened while I was out there, because I was not physically out there.
I guess my question was, my comment was that you have all the faith in the world that he's done this job correctly as an engineer.
I, I do, and I see Mr. McGee came on. Did he want to comment on this? As in Kevin.
Kevin, how are you?
Yes, I did speak with Bruce and asked him if Scott Hollow Project met his issues that he'd had earlier, and he said they met all the issues.
Okay, thank you very much. Does that answer your question? Deb, you have another question?
Well, I, I guess I'm just, I just want, you know, I'm a stickler. I like to make sure that, you know, we had seven issues. And in this little memorandum, it doesn't explain any, and Gary went into very detail on what was done. So is it customary that we would have a report, like, so we are, we have verification that that was done? I mean, because it does not state any of this. It's literally one sentence.
Well, they had, just Kevin had just stated that he met with the engineer, and I know he didn't give us a detailed report, but he met with the engineer and he met with, and he was satisfied with all the concerns. So that's good enough for me. I mean, both the.
But Mr. Pres, Mr. President, I'm not sure he has to, because it's going to be a private road that is going to be owned and maintained by a homeowners association, not the town of Coventry.
Right, so maybe, maybe in the future they could get more of a detail, but I think our concerns have been met by the two reports from a planning director and DPW director. Are you satisfied with that, Deb? And like I said, maybe in the future, we can request a little.
I think I just, you know, I would like to make sure, because now if, you know, this, this isn't done properly and the homeowners have issues, we've just signed off on it. So I think, you know, what more detailed report?
All right, well, with that. But I'm pretty comfortable with the engineers' statements, so we'll just make a vote on it and, you know, you vote accordingly. So with that being said, the Chair will entertain a motion. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a second. All in favor, Madam Clerk?
Harry McGee.
Yes.
Greg LaBosse-Air.
Yes.
Gary Cody.
Mr. President, as an employee of Miozy and one of the contractors on the job, I'm going to recuse myself from this vote, please.
Okay.
Okay, Ann Dixon.
Yes.
Deb Bacon.
No, I can't vote for this without having a final report, more detailed. Thank you.
Okay, vote is three to one, and one abstention. Vote, motion carries. All right, the next item on the agenda would be item B3. Madam Clerk?
Adopting the Capitol, Municipal, and School Department budgets for the fiscal year 2020-21.
I'll save my comments to after. Wazika has opportunity to present this budget to us.
Okay, thank you. To begin with, I listened to last Wednesday's comments that I, that I received from the council members. Contrary to popular belief that went out, that the meeting wasn't worth anything, it really was. Because I got to hear what everybody looked at, what their concerns were, what they wanted. And what I did, what I did get out of the meeting is that a multitude of the council members wanted to see the School Department receive the, the full amount that they had requested, the $1.883144 million in additional expenditure, additional spending on their budget. I also listened to what the council members spoke about in reference to. They also were adamant that they wanted money going back to the, to the town. This was not going to be a one-sided issue. I also heard that the 4% cap was pretty much what people were looking at and going for, which is what I did do. I'm recommending the budget of an additional $1.883144 be added to the School Department and an additional $992,454 added to the town budget. What I've done, because until this thing is actually finalized, there is a lot of work to do. I'm going to explain where I, where I'm recommending on the town side. But there are a lot of line items that are already built into this budget that are into the systems. What we did to make it easier and more efficient and save numerous hours of work that could in fact have to be reversed if things are not approved, was we, we did a run and printout on the line-by-line budget and then added into it, in the area next to it, what my recommendations were for increases on this. Obviously, this was all increases, no decrease. The original budget you received in the binder is the budget with additional expenditures and other line areas. And those were, those were all listed in the, in the, in the handout that you received. You also received the resolution for all of this today with the Exhibit A worksheet that goes along with it. I listened to what people want, and one of the recommendations I'm making on the, on the town side is to increase the capital, capital improvement money by $200,000. So I'm looking to improve, to increase that by $200,000. That's still not where I want it to be. This would make $400,000 in the budget. It still is substantially low compared to what we need to see in over the next few years. We, hopefully, we will be able to put even more into it. I listened to what some of the council members spoke about with the need for a performance audit. And I agree. I think a performance audit is a, is a good addition to the town. I think it needs to be done. And what we've done is I've added $100,000 into this budget for a performance audit. Now, that's not going to be enough for the whole, for the whole audit. But because we're so late into this budget year, and once that $100,000 is in, in the line item in the budget, it will be there next year as well. And that $100,000 combined with this one over the, over the six, eight-month period will be a $200,000 necessary to do this performance audit. I'm also going to re-recommend, and again, it's going forward, that that money stay in there. John and I, Ms. Arnett and I have discussed the, the need for an ongoing internal auditor, which would, which would manage and monitor what the activities of both the town and the municipal side. So this money staying in that would, we feel would be good for the town, good for the school. We'll have an, we'll have ongoing knowledge of what's happening. I've also, we are, we are hurting in several areas on employees. We are planning, Planning and Zoning Department is, is maxed out, stressed out. We have got a substantial number of, of developments that are ongoing in the pipeline, and we do not have the manpower over there. I've got a, a comp plan that we've been waiting for, for, I don't know, three years. Again, we don't have the manpower. So we have recently replaced the, the Assistant Planner with an Associate Planner, and he actually began today, Mr. John Studley IV, a local resident. He will be in there. But I'm also proposing that we add another Associate Planner position to the Planning Department to also assist in all of these plans and programs that we have. Further, I, we need and want an economic development person in this town. And I have got money set aside in there to do that total cost of $93,000, which may or may not actually be enough to do the full year. On that, we may have to go to a .75 or .8 FTE on that position. But we've, we've got that in there, so. And he would also work out of the Planning Department and assisting on other areas when not involved in economic development and growth for the town. I'm also looking at a finance clerk to our Assessors Department. Our Assessors Department is woefully understaffed for the amount of work that they do. So I'm looking to add one there. And I'm also looking to add another clerk, that would be Human Resources as well as Tax Assessor and, excuse me, Tax Collector and Floating, where need be, and other aspects of the town. The total cost of those four positions would be $310,394.95. That would bring our, our, our employee, our employee department scratching. That would bring our, our, our employee, our employee depart, scratch that. That would bring up the departments that are, they're, they're currently unable to meet their, their needs and the goals because they are, they are understaffed. I'm also looking to and proposing that we, we fix a deficiency to the non-union and, uh, department head staff that has not received a salary increase in over three years. By proposing a 4% increase to them, which is still less than what the other unions have received over the last three years, but it would be a, a nice boost. And the cost on that would be $87,000 for the year to do that. That also includes a couple of other positions that we would be moving up the pay scale because having, our HR director having evaluated uh, those positions and versus, uh, other positions, similar positions throughout other communities, they are woefully under, under, uh, funded, underpaid for, for those positions. So we're looking to make a couple of improvements in those. You've received all of this in your packet. You have a breakdown by all of the titles, positions, and the proposed new jobs. I'm also looking at putting back into the DPW department another $100,000 in various materials and road, uh, road repairs, sanitation repairs, and several other areas that could total up $100,000. The breakdown for that is also in that packet that I gave you. I'm also proposing $95,000 going back into the Poxxon Rec budget. Uh, $30,000 of it will be for, uh, temporary summer employees or employees needed to run different programs. And then 65,000 would be for materials and equipment, uh, repairs and things of such that they also need. That, like I said, that total comes out to, uh, 992,454 dollars. The levy increase on this would be 3.98, 3.99, right in that ballpark. It would also increase the tax rate to a rate of approximately, because this is not locked in yet, approximately 1985 per thousand on the residential and 2382 per thousand on the, on the commercial side. Uh, residential and tangible would be the 1985. Motor vehicle stays the same. Uh, so that's, that would be the effect on it. It's about an 80, 87, 89 cent per thousand increase over the current zero that we have under the temporary budget that we're running. You have the resolution. We're looking at a projected dates of October 20, 20th and 22nd. I'm waiting to finalize those dates with the, with the state to make sure that they can prep the voting machines for that. If you approve this budget, well, tonight, it will be, uh, all the paperwork will be sent down to the Office of Municipal Affairs to get that all approved by them and then forwarded out for advertisement for the FTM and all-day referendum. Uh, John and I are here for any questions you might have on this. Uh, but that's my recommendation at this point.
All right. Can I, uh, thank you very much for that presentation. I did see, uh, you know, we all had it in our packets, and I appreciate the work you put into this. I just want to make a comment that, uh, I can't stress enough for people to exercise their right to get out and vote. Uh, we presented a budget that we thought was going to be good with the fiscal times that we're in, and the taxpayers told us they wanted to raise taxes. They wanted more money. We would have been guessing if we didn't go to the full amount. So this is what the taxpayers ask for. Uh, I, I, if you want a tax increase, you vote for this. If you don't want a tax increase, don't. But I just can't emphasize enough that I encourage the voters to get out and exercise their right to vote. With that being said, I'm going to open up to any other council members who have any questions concerning this budget. I see, uh, Ann Dixon has a question or comment. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you. I have some questions about the, um, town budget. Uh, first of all, I'm disappointed to see the performance audit is listed at $100,000 because in previous conversations, I was told that it could be up to 300, 400,000 dollars. I don't want to see money put into this line item and not have enough to do a job. There are many people in the community who say that government is not transparent. They believe that we're not effective, we're not efficient. And I believe that a performance audit for both the schools and the town is extremely important. But if we don't, if we just put in a token amount of money and we don't have enough money to do this audit, I think that we would be doing a disservice to not only the taxpayers, but to, um, everyone on the council because we do want to see, um, improvements.
Mrs. Dixon, as I stated, that is only half because of the fact that we're so late into this process.
Right.
There'll be another 100,000 come July 1st in the next fiscal year's budget that will be utilized with this 100, making it a $200,000 project at the very least. So it's, it's not 100,000, it's 100,000 this year. It would begin, by the time we, we go out, get, solicit RFPs, get all of this, we're going to be several months down the road. This would not start till probably February, March. It's going to take several months. We would, at that point, the next budget would pay the additional 100,000. So that's why I split it up the way we did to be able to, uh, cover it over two years and not hit it with just one year.
I heard you did, I heard you say that, and I appreciate the economics of this, but I just want to make sure that even with $200,000, we would be able to do this job.
That's the beauty of splitting it up, Mrs., Mrs. Dixon. If we find out that we start to go far, it's going to be even more. We will add the additional monies into the following year's budget so we can do it right. We're not going to do it half-baked. It's going to be done either the way it needs to be done completely on both sides with the proper funding that it needs, or it won't be. We're still trying to get some, some, some numbers back. We put, we put out feelers to several different companies, and we're waiting to see what they're coming back with. Uh, we've got Blue Shapiro, we've got a couple of others that John has contacted. But we're looking at, we're, we're funding at least 200,000 between this year and next year's budget for this. And if we need to add more in next year, we can add more in next year to do it correctly. That's why we want to make this a permanent part of the budget. We want an internal auditor to be, to be following this every year. So we don't have to worry about bringing somebody in to spend six months analyzing everything. They will look at the purchases as they go on. They will, they will manage. They will be, in addition to our external auditor doing it at the end of the year, they will be monitoring and viewing what goes on during the course of the year. So after the initial examination, they, we will have a company continuing to do what needs to be done. John, you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I would like to say, can everybody hear me okay? Because sometimes my mic doesn't work that well.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So this is, uh, an internal auditor is a great addition to, uh, to any type of, uh, management technique. You can grab another company that gets another eye to it than when you're really involved in something. Sometimes you don't see things. So it's good to have a third party company and looking at things before the financial statements happen. This is an actual, uh, very common occurrence also in the banking industry as well, where they bring it in. Like, for example, I have some accounts that I would love to take extra time and go look through and, and clean them up and do things like that, but I just don't have that. I don't have the resources. I don't have the time. It just adds strength to our financial statements, and it does add to the fact that we're being transparent. Um, so that's, that's the point here. And I absolutely hear that as far as the, the concern for the total dollar amount. It, it seems, well, well, i- it is pretty low when it comes to what we are looking at, but because we're sparring two different years, we could make that and manage that. I have reached out to different, uh, companies, but when you try to reach out and they don't want to tell you the exact dollar amount that they're thinking about doing because there's so much involved, that, that the scope can grow so much differently. So it's, it's kind of hard to do, get an exact figure. So $200,000 is, it seems appropriate for it to do a, an audit or a performance audit that could straddle two years. That seems to be on the, uh, right area for what we're looking for. So if you have any additional questions.
Thank you. This is for the school and for the town. Is that correct, Mr. Wazika?
That is correct, Mrs. Dixon. If you look at the, we currently are paying John, what, 65,000 a year for our external auditor?
It's about that much, yes.
So we're talking, we're, we're actually talking, setting aside three times that amount for, for this audit. So it's, it's, I mean, the, the external auditor, when they commit at the end of the year, go through everything. So the workload that they do for 65,000, we're looking at tripling that amount of money to do, to do this internal, uh, you know, audit, uh, and, uh, we're, we're fairly confident that we're going to be able to get a good product. And like I said, if we need to go above that amount, then we will add that into the next year's budget to give us exactly what we need to do.
Great, thank you. Um, I have a question for Mr. McGee. Uh, there is $100,000 set aside for DPW, and I want to know, um, if you do not get this money, what kind of reduction in services will there be? Is this in addition? Is this work that you would not have done or supplement work you would be doing? Um, because I need to understand better how this money will be used. And, but I will mention that most of the people in my district, except for this last month or so, almost everyone sends me emails about road conditions. So I know that it's important to people, but I need to understand if this is going to supplement what you do or how it's going to be used.
Go on mute, Kevin.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon. Uh, the items that Mr. Wazika placed back in the budget are items that were reduced from my budget to make a zero budget earlier on. And those are reductions on repairs to vehicles that we knew that we're going to go over. The asphalt road repair line was cut in half. Uh, the overtime, this, the salt, all these items that we know were in a, in a good year, we won't have to kid it, but we don't know what the winter is going to be like. We don't know what the conditions are. We know the road conditions are bad. We have, we were not able to go forward with our road paving project because of the COVID and everything was frozen. We did have that ready to go, but it did not happen. All of our repairs are at a standstill right now because we're only dealing with half. That also includes the coal patch during the wintertime plus berms and repairs. So we're going to be hard pressed to do anything above and beyond what we knew for the essential services that we have funded right now.
Thank you, Mr. McGee.
Okay, thank you very much, Miss Dixon. Does any other council members have any questions? Uh, I see Deb Bacon's got her hand up. Go ahead.
Hi, Ed. I just wanted to ask you about the capital improvement, 400,000. Is that school and for the town, 200 to the town, 200 to the school?
Well, I'm actually, the school got all of the 200,000 last year. They went to them, we, we'd envisioned when we started this that it would be a flip-flop back and forth, one, one year for the school, one year for the town. Because we would actually be increasing this by 200,000 this year, I thought the appropriate and fair thing to do would be to give that, they would, the town would have 300,000 and the school would get 100,000 of it for additional needs that they might have. That way, over the two years, we each gotten 300,000. And moving forward, anytime we move it up, we would do the same thing, and we would split that increase between the two. So nobody's getting ripped off, so to speak, that everybody's getting a, a fair shake at this.
But the schools also need the, um, capital improvement. What is the amount? Do you remember what the amount is that they need for the ride requirements?
Uh, they were shy by 400 and, I believe, 50-some thousand dollars on that last year.
Pardon?
They were 450, I believe, off the top of my head, it was 450,000 that they were shy. I think it was 454 last year. That's why they, uh, they ran into that issue. So yes.
So even the 100,000 isn't going to help them out this year?
Not, it's, it's a start. That's all I can, I can say.
They, they would need the full 400,000 for the reimbursement.
That's still, I believe, would not even make it to the total amount between the two years, last year and this year with the kicker.
Yeah.
I want to say the number is actually closer to, um, a million, I want to say, Ed.
Again, going forward with their, with their, if, if the bonding goes, goes through, and if they get that for the, for the development, all of those bond payments will be allowed towards that, that number, and they will no longer ever have an issue with meeting that, uh, that capital improvement number again. So I mean, that would, that is going to be resolved if, if they get a building or if they get the bond pass for improvements in the building. But in the meantime, I mean, there's, again, there's only so much to go around. I'm trying to be fair to both sides. That's why I'm looking at giving them and recommending the 1.883144, the full amount that they requested. And, uh, we also need some stuff on our side too, though.
Okay, it, um, so the 1.883, that's a, that is what that they, they approved back in January 2020, right? The school committee?
Correct.
Um, and that was pre-COVID.
Correct.
Um, we are COVID, and they have a decrease of students. They have students that have left the district, um, they, to go to private school or to go to other districts that are offering programs that the school department no longer has. Um, they have 30% of their students are doing distant learning, not going into the schools. Um, we also, we're supposed to see a budget from them. We had nothing from them. We didn't receive the COVID saving list. We didn't see the FEMA, what they were submitting to FEMA, and I guess FEMA, um, is not covering their, their COVID costs?
We, we, we received a budget that was approved, a COVID budget that was approved by the school committee on Thursday. We've been tied up on this as well as, I, I feel as though the COVID budget is separate and apart from this budget. We need to get this done, and then we can move forward on that. John and I met with, uh, Mr. Levis and Mrs. Manjorelli the other day, and our understanding, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, I, my understanding was if there are savings going forward because of, of distance learning and other things like that, those funds would help to offset their need for the additional COVID money.
That, that is correct. She, it was also mentioned that the 1.8 is, is still what they needed before COVID even started. Yes. Other expenditures, they have heard additional costs, but the 4%, that, that 1.8 billion dollars is the most that they are allowed to ask for as well. So, um, and essentially, that 1.8 is, there's still a concern on, uh, Ms. Manjorelli's position on, even if that's going to be enough too. So we, we were hearing it loud and clear that, that sounded like the, that was the needed amount moving forward.
And we're still not 100% sure on the state aid that they're getting because the state still hasn't passed a budget and have intentions of passing a budget.
No, I mean, that's, that's the other part of this, this question mark. We have no idea. My understanding is they're getting funded right now 92% of, of the, uh, this, what they were, uh, the state aid. That's it at this point. So they're under, under, underfunded from there.
Yeah, but that's a good reason. That's a good point you made. That's one of the reasons why we have put off putting this second budget together, hoping that the state would get together and give us a, a figure. It's very difficult to put a budget together not knowing the state aids, but we have to move forward.
And, and I, and I understand that, but I am concerned because they still need the COVID money. And the COVID money, where is that? I mean, we're talking is, you know, regarding that, but I wanted to see the COVID saving, like, you know, from the spring to see how much they are going to be offsetting to try and open schools.
900, they, they have, they have an offset of 990,000 dollars in savings from last year that's, that's offsetting part of their COVID. They currently have between state aid, state COVID aid and that, about $2 million that they currently have for expenditures on COVID. And at this point, I mean, it, it, it may or may not be sufficient for, for, at the short term, it is. So they've got funds available to them at this point. We all agree that we've got to finalize a budget first before we start moving forward on the rest of that piece. And that is something we need to do, and we will do along with them. But right now, we've got to get this, this done.
Well, I'm, I'm also concerned because they stated at our, our joint meeting, even if they get the 1.88, they're not, it didn't sound to me that they, they would not agree to it, that they would, um, bring back sports, all sports, bring back all clubs, and bring back the honors program.
As you're well aware, Mrs. Bacon.
And this, and they may not even, that, so I, I'm really concerned with this. Like I said, this is a pre-COVID, and you know, these kids aren't going to have this. I mean, we've got juniors that are looking for scholarship. This is their vital year to be seen by colleges. We've got seniors that are filling out applications, and they no longer have their clubs. They no longer have their honors program. And for the school department not to even give a guarantee that they would even reinstate this if they get the 1.88 is concerning to me. I'm also extremely concerned is last week it was announced that Rhode Island is the second highest unemployment in the country. I don't know what the numbers are in Coventry. I mean, I, I, you know, it's, and I get it. And this has been extremely tough. And this has been extremely tough. But we have a lot of folks that have hours cut, have had their pay or still have not gone back to work. I have, and I've told you before, I have had folks that have called me telling me that they're closing their retirement fund so they can pay their mortgage. This is concerning. I mean, it's kind of a slap in the face, especially, you know, it really bothered me when the school committee gave the superintendent a $12,000 stipend. And, you know, I think it was five or six other got $6,000 stipends. And they got the stipends because they're doing extra work because of COVID. We're all doing extra work. I know I'm doing extra work with my job. We're all doing it. And I think during this pandemic and with so many folks out of work and folks getting raises, I think it's going to be extremely tough. And without any type of a guarantee that the school committee, they said they're going to make even more cuts. I mean, I don't see them reinstating sports and these clubs and the honors program. That is a simple gesture that they could have made and they chose not to. So maybe with this, I'm not sure what's going to happen. You've spoken to Mr. Levis and Ms. Mangerelli. What are your thoughts, Ed?
I mean, I will say this, the school committee heard the students. They reinstated the 42,000 for the full sports. They've heard them. I think they understand.
Well, they reinstated the sports, but they didn't talk about funding. And I got to go and tell you, the parents raised that money for those sports. The parents did it. It wasn't the school committee of the kindness of their heart. It was the parents that did it. They did it. They only said, yes, we'll give the blessing, but it was the parents that raised the money.
Deb, excuse me. Deb, when you say it wasn't the school committee, I need to verify something. School committee member Murray donated, my understanding is, he donated his entire year's pay that he gets for being on the school committee to that fundraising campaign. So those sports could be reinstated. And I know he wasn't the only one. But I don't think we can generalize and put all school committee members in the same boat when some of them are obviously publicly doing what they can to help out. So I just don't want to see, I just don't want to see Luke lumped into the same as everybody else because I know he went out of his way to help.
And that's, and like I said, that is fantastic. But when we need the school committee to go and reinstate this, when you'd reinstate, you also fund it. But it was the parents. They worked their butts off and I commend them for it. They did an outstanding job so that they could have this. It's vital to them.
Deb, can I say, I share your frustration. I mean, I think I made it clear last meeting how frustrated I am. And I do share your frustration, but that's why my comment I made prior to, after hearing Mr. Wazika's budget, the people have to get out and vote. That was the reason why we're in this position now. They've got to get out and voice their opinion and hopefully we've had the awakening because if this budget passes, they're going to receive a tax bill in the amount of that they voted to raise, that they approved. So I mean, we presented what we thought was reasonable and the taxpayers have spoken. But I share your frustration there, believe me.
And yes, I am, I'm extremely frustrated. I, you know, I have talked to Ed about it. All I want, you know, I thank you for putting in the performance audit. I mean, I've only been asking for four years. It finally got in 100,000. But I would have, like Ann Dixon said, I would have liked to have seen more in there. It is long overdue. But I think going to the 4% is just not what we should be doing during this. We tried to go and level fund this and trying to, you know, help the residents. We're looking, it's every year we're going to the 4%. God only knows what we're going to be looking at next year. I mean, when you have people that could potentially be losing their homes and now you're getting a 4% and you get all these folks getting, you know, stipends and raises, I'm just really concerned. I wish we had not put all of this in there. I would have liked to have seen it not at 4%. I, you know.
Well, the nice thing about that is that the taxpayers have the final say so. And if the taxpayers don't want the 4% increase, then they will come out and vote this budget down. And I want the taxpayers to have the final say. So that's what's fair to them. We went with zero. We went with zero. It got voted down. So now we're going with 4%. It's back in the taxpayers' hands and that's where it should be.
But I don't think you go from zero to four. I think we could have done something right in the middle, been, you know, conservative, not like, hey, it's in your face. Hey, you voted this. Now we're going right to the 4% and that's.
But I couldn't justify, as a council member, I couldn't justify giving the school additional funds and not giving additional funds to municipal side because you know, we've discussed this. You know what we did to the municipal side to get to a zero-based increase budget. We decimated Fox and Rec. We decimated some of these departments. I couldn't justify giving it to the schools and not to the municipal side too. Our municipal employees deserve it just as much. So let the taxpayers decide. I know 4%, Deb, let me be honest with you. I'm tonight going to vote to approve this budget. I'm not going to the ballot box in voting in favor of this budget. I don't want to pay 4% more. But I'm going to do that as a taxpayer. Tonight, I'm going to act as a council member. The taxpayers have spoken. They didn't want a 0% increase. So I'm going to go with the manager's recommendation and let the taxpayers decide.
But I think as a council member, I really think we should do our due diligence. I mean, really, what the taxpayers want, they want a performance audit. That's what should be in the budget. There should be 400,000 for that performance audit and that's it. And that's what we give to the taxpayers because that's what the taxpayers want. They want a performance audit. They want this to be taken.
And they're going to get one. It's a line item in the budget moving forward.
But there's all sorts of other things in there, Gary. That's the problem. You know, we went from zero to 4%. We should have gone, and it should not have gone to the 4%. We shouldn't have been creating these positions, just like, like I said, with the school department. We have no guarantee they're going to get that money and they're going to reinstate any of these programs. I'm sorry.
And they will not guarantee that to us. I see John has his hand up. Go ahead, John.
I just want to restate something that Mr. Wazika pointed out was that the corrections on some of these positions are failures on our side that need to be reinstated. The ones that come straight to mind again is the tax assessor and extra man hours underneath the human resources and then the planning, like they come to mind when I just think about it. I see it happen on a daily basis. The tax assessor position, they don't have time to put in all the new, the change of the clothing order. They don't have time to review and add all the additions and things of that nature. And everyone that's been home since COVID, you can ask parks or planning and zoning, how many people have gone out and put a new deck on? How many people have done an addition? There's so many changes that take place to our base that need to be taken in and taken in properly. So that department in and of itself is overwhelmed. And just putting that person in there helps the town overall. You're going to get them, you're effectively getting that money back. As far as the human resources side, that person is extremely overwhelmed. As far as being able to, there's lots of funds that are associated with that as well. So I'm looking at this not only as, yes, we're adding in expenses, but we're saving costs. We're getting things correct. These are, Mr. Wazika, go ahead. When were all these positions cut? Like that was done in?
That's what I was about to say. This isn't adding new positions. This is bringing back positions that have been removed over time in cost-saving measures that have caused untold numbers of problems in our assessors' office, in the planning office. These are positions that other managers have decided we can get rid of them, save some money. And now we're hurting. The only new position that I'm actually proposing is the economic development position, which I really and truly believe this town needs someone that's dedicated to bringing business, commercial, industrial into this town. I think it'll pay for itself over time. It usually, it does in other communities that have them on. I think it's a great position, but the other three are not new positions. I'm not advocating for new positions. I'm advocating to bring back the ones that would dump over time to save money. And now our departments are suffering because they've been dumped. All right, thank you, Ms. Wazika. I think your point is taken, Deb. Like I said, I share your frustration. But I think the taxpayers have spoken. Is there any other council members who have a comment? I see Ann Dixon's hand up. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
First of all, I do understand Member Bacon's concerns. We are still receiving a 1.8 pre-COVID budget. And one would expect that there would be some changes. I mean, they can't run middle school sports and there are a few other things that there are savings, but they also have additional expenses. We know that based on comments I made at a previous town council meeting, we have a plan by which we can help them with COVID money should they need it. And we can discuss that in another meeting. What I'm concerned about is this. I did present an amendment by which I asked for the support of the school budget at 2.5% versus 4%. And the council did not approve that. That's fine. But we're going from zero to four and it is a big leap and I understand that. And there are people who are unemployed. But I've been receiving a lot of emails and every single email says, support the budget, bring back sports. And I want the voters to understand that this vote is not a vote to bring back sports. This vote should be a vote to support a very robust academic program. And you have to buy into that, not buy into bringing back sports because we can't tell the school committee what to do. But we vote for the budget, the school budget, if we really want to support a strong academic program. And that's going to be a hard sell. The reason for that is that we're going to go to the voters in the middle of October asking for 4%. Then possibly in February, the school design committee is going to go to the voters and ask them to approve a bond for improvement of schools. And they'll make a good argument why we need this money, but they're going to go back to the voters. And then come next May, which is less than a year from now, we're going to go back to the voters. And I would almost guarantee that there'd be another 4% increase from the schools. And I don't know what it would be from the town. So I'm just suggesting, and everyone knows that I'm a strong advocate for education, but I'm suggesting that when the voters go to vote, they should be thinking about the value of education, but know that we are in it for the long term. This is not just one vote. It's a vote because you do support education, but you know that we're going to be going back to you and asking you for more support as time goes on. So I mean, I think that it is a very difficult sell for 4%. We've got some very strong requests on the town side. And I think they're all very strong requests and I support all of them. One thing we didn't mention was a pay increase for our non-union people. They haven't had an increase in a long time. We've got some extremely strong department heads and we want to continue with them and we want them to stay with us. But I wish that the school budget had been less. I wish it had been changed in some way, but it is what it is. And we need to decide whether we're going to let the voters decide, as Mr. McGee suggests, let the voters decide and each of us in our own conscious will vote the way we feel is the best way to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Here again, I can't emphasize enough that people have got to get out and vote for this. You're right. You're absolutely right. It was going to be possibly three votes coming up within the next eight months. And the people need to get out and vote and voice their opinion. Okay. Any other comments from any other? If not, then the chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, Madam Clerk.
Carrie McGee?
Yes.
Greg LaBorsonea?
Yes.
Gary Cody?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Deb Bacon?
No.
Motion carries, four to one. Thank you. The next item on the agenda, excuse me, is C1, Madam Clerk.
Tax assessors, additions and abatements.
Okay, is our tax assessor here, Mr. Wazika? She is. Karen, would you give your report, please?
Hi, this is the second abatement and addition report this month. I just wanted you to be aware, we had one the first, the 14th meeting as well. So for this meeting, we have abatements in the amount of $6,015.98. And we have additions in the amount of $16,347.46.
Okay, we've had a chance to look these over. Is there any council members have any concern? Thank you for putting this together like you do. It makes it easy for us.
Okay.
The chair will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept the tax assessor's report.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh wait, we have a second. All in favor, Madam Clerk.
Carrie McGee?
Yes.
Greg LaBorsonea?
Yes.
Gary Cody?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Deb Bacon?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Excuse me. The next item on the agenda is C2, Madam Clerk.
Coventry Sewer Subcommittee Recommendation for Approval of Sewer Tie-In Located at The Woods at Red Brook, Phase 3, 100 April Court, Platte 24, Lot 125.
Okay, Mr. Wazika, do you have any comments on that? We have the maps and everything in our package. I see it was all approved by the sewer subcommittee. Correct. It's all ready to go and just your stamp of approval on it. Okay, I've looked it over. Like I said, the sewer subcommittee's approved this and moved this forward. Does there anybody have any questions, any comments? Seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
We have a second. All in favor, Madam Clerk.
Carrie McGee?
Yes.
Greg LaBorsonea?
Yes.
Gary Cody?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Deb Bacon?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is C3 and we are going to table that matter. So we'll move on to C4. Madam Clerk.
Reappointing three candidates to the Friends of Human Services.
Okay, we have advertised for boards and commissions and we mentioned quite often, we're looking for volunteers. And unfortunately, we do not get a lot of response for it. So I'm hoping, I'm putting that cry out again to please consider volunteering for boards and commissions. But the ones that we have, excuse me, reappointments and they've done a great job. So I'm going to ask, we've had to look over, what did I say, C4? There's three people who want to be reappointed and there's three applicants. So we made it pretty easy for us. The chair will entertain a motion. If you have any questions, feel free. If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion to appoint the three, the reappointees. The names to Tangilo, Tillinghast and Zeroli to the roles of Friends of Human Services.
Thank you for mentioning the names as I fail to do that. So I appreciate that. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
We have a second. All in favor, Madam Clerk.
Carrie McGee?
Yes.
Greg LaBorsonea?
Yes.
Gary Cody?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Deb Bacon?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is C5, Madam Clerk.
Reappointing two candidates to the Coventry Land Trust. We did have a last minute decision to not be reappointed for Alexandria.
Okay, so we do have two openings and we have at this time, one person, John Donovan, who wishes to be reappointed. So here again, hopefully somebody else will step up and put an application in the future. But the chair will entertain a motion for John Donovan to be reappointed to the Coventry Land Trust.
I'll make a motion to reappoint John Donovan.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
We have a second. All in favor, Madam Clerk.
Carrie McGee?
Yes.
Greg LaBorsonea?
Yes.
Gary Cody?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Deb Bacon?
Yes.
The motion carries. The next item on the agenda is C6, Madam Clerk.
Reappointing one candidate to the Patuxet River Authority.
Okay, we have a gentleman named John Priest who has been on there and seeks reappointment. If there's no questions, the chair will entertain a motion to reappoint.
I'll make a.
Go ahead, Gregory.
Okay, just continuing. We all did it before, so I will make the motion to reappoint John Priest.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a second, all in favor, Madam Clerk.
Carrie McGee?
Yes.
Greg LaBosse here?
Yes.
Gary Cody?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Deb Bacon?
Yes.
Okay, carries, the next item on the agenda is C7, Madam Clerk.
Reappointing one candidate to the Coventry Housing Authority.
Okay, we have Mr. Scott Duckworth who would like to be reappointed to the Coventry Housing. He's currently on there and doing a great job, so with there's no questions, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I would be honored to approve the motion for reappointing Mr. Duckworth.
I will, I will second that motion.
We have a motion and we have a second, all in favor, Madam Clerk.
Carrie McGee?
Yes, absolutely.
Greg LaBosse here?
Yes.
Gary Cody?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Deb Bacon?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is C8, Madam Clerk.
Reappointing three candidates to the Coventry Municipal Pension.
Okay, this municipal pension, we are looking to put on Mr. John Arnett, Mr. Ed Wazika and Jay Andriot, who is currently serving, has a representative from the municipal side. So if there's any questions, if not, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
We, oh, sorry, I see Deb Bacon has her hand up, go ahead.
Yes, um, there's three positions, but there's four appointments?
No, if you look at that, there's one for the municipal side and one for the police side.
Okay, all right.
All right, I was confused when I saw it first, but yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, I thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. So we have a motion, do we have a second?
I second the motion.
We have a second, all in favor, Madam Clerk?
Carrie McGee?
Yes.
Greg LaBosse here?
Yes.
Gary Cody?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Deb Bacon?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, the next item on the agenda is C9, Madam Clerk.
Reappointing three candidates to the Coventry Police Pension Board.
Okay, we would like to, John Arnett representing the town, Ed Wazika and Dennis Skowalski representing the police. If there's no questions, the chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve and we have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Carrie McGee?
Yes.
Greg LaBosse here?
Yes.
Gary Cody?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Deb Bacon?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, the next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk, D1, just read that one to the local public hearing.
New second-hand license Jimmy's Junk. It says 3003, but it should be 3000. It should be 303. South Main Street, 303.
Nick, is that going to be an issue? The license address is correct on the application. There was a typo on the agenda and it slipped through and it's 3003. South Main, it's actually 303 South Main. Is that an issue or can we correct it?
Not an issue.
Thank you. Okay, so the chair will entertain a motion to open public hearing and then maybe we can get an explanation about, maybe Mr. Wazika, could you tell us about Jimmy's Junk?
Motion to open public hearing.
We have a.
I second the motion.
We have a second, all in favor, Madam Clerk.
Carrie McGee?
Yes.
Greg LaBosse here?
Yes.
Gary Cody?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Deb Bacon?
Yes.
Okay, public hearing is open, Mr. Wazika, you want to tell us about Jimmy's Junk?
I'm going to be very professional here, sir. They are going to be, they are going to be doing, be very, very professional, very. Something, yeah, they're going to be selling second-hand used furniture, electronics, all the things like that. It's a second-hand store that's going to be, my understanding is specializing in, in the hot goods. And not necessarily so much the clothes.
Is that the old Napa building?
Please?
Is that the old Napa Auto Parts building?
I believe it is, that's about 4,000 square feet over there, so it's a beautiful warehouse.
Yes, good, good, I'm walking the business in there, I mean, it's the name.
And it's currently zoned commercial.
Yes. Okay, so, well, public hearing is open, Mr. Wazika, if you, if there's no comments or questions from the, from the council, I'll open it up if you see anybody that has any comments.
I am over on the attendee side right now. If anyone would like to make comment in public hearing, please raise your hand so I can bring you into the meeting. The offer is going once. The offer is going twice. We have no take, sir.
Okay, yeah, we'll entertain a.
We do have one, we got a James McGovern, excuse me.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. McGovern, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, hello.
Hello, please state your name, spell your name and your, and state your address, please, for the record.
My name, James McGovern, J.A.M.E.S. M.C. capital G.O.V.E.R.N. And my address is 29 West Wood Ave. And that's actually in New Wanting, Connecticut. However, I'm a gentleman that's trying to open the Jimmy's Junk store and I just didn't know if there are any questions that I had to answer.
Oh, I just want to welcome you to town and hopefully you have good luck and I think it's great that we're utilizing that building and I personally don't have any questions, but I'll open up to any other council members.
Well, I, I'm just, I'm just glad that we got an explanation on what the store was going to be because I was a little afraid about what the town manager was going to say.
Okay, I see Ann Dixon has her hand, go ahead.
Mr. McGovern, what will be your hours of operation, please?
So right now, we actually have a current location that we're also going to maintain in Connecticut. Due to COVID, we've been open Friday, Saturday, Sunday from 10 to 5. Eventually, I'd like to be able to be open Tuesday through Sunday, closed on Monday. Probably from 10 to 5 or 11 to 5, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Okay, is there any question, Mr. Dixon?
Yes, he answered my question, I just want to ask Mr. Gorham, do we allow businesses like this to be open on Sunday? Is there some kind of special permit we need to give?
You're on mute, Nick.
I don't think so.
Well, you don't think so, what does, what does that mean?
Well, I, I mean, I wasn't expecting the question, I'm not positive, if you want, I can, if, if we're not, if our ordinances do not allow this business to be open on Sunday, that'll go in the license. Council would have to amend the ordinance, but my recollection of the ordinances is that there is no prohibition on this type of business being open on a Sunday.
Okay, Mr. Gorham, if, just please do just a little research and let Mr. Wazika know that there's no problem, okay?
I will, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and Mr. McGovern, I'm sorry, Mr. McGovern, is that your correct name?
McGovern.
McGovern, okay. I, like I said, I wish you luck, I don't see any other, any other people asking any questions and is there anybody else in the public, Mr. Wazika, that you see?
There is not at this time.
All right, thank you, Mr. McGovern, and I wish you luck. That being said, the chair will entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, all in favor, Madam Clerk?
Carrie McGee?
Yes.
Greg LaBosse here?
Yes.
Gary Cody?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Deb Bacon?
Yes.
Okay, public hearing is now closed, the chair will entertain a motion towards the license for Jimmy's Junk.
I'll make a motion to approve that, that license.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
I'll second it, Mr. President.
We have a second, all in favor, Madam Clerk?
Carrie McGee?
Yes.
Greg LaBosse here?
Yes.
Gary Cody?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Deb Bacon?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, once again, good luck to you, Mr. McGovern. All right, Mr. McGovern, I'm sorry, the next item on the agenda, E1, Madam Clerk.
First reading of proposed amendment to change Chapter 153, Licensed Businesses, creating a new section, Mobile Food Establishments, and amending Chapter 183, Peddling and Soliciting, Sections 1 and 4.
Okay, now, these are first readings, the opportunity for us to look them over to ask any questions of Mr. Wazika or anybody else through the week until our next meeting when we have a public hearing on it. So with that being said, I'm going to have.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
I understand that on the first reading, we don't usually ask questions, but on page 125 of 131, Section 4, there is a blank where it says the maximum number of food establishment permits that may be issued by the town shall be blank. And I think that we need to put in a number there so that we can then have a second reading.
Okay, Mr. Wazika or Mr. Gorham? You're on mute, Nick.
You're on mute again.
I, I left that blank intentionally because I didn't want to guess what the council was going to put in for the number of licenses. I think that's part of the public hearing, how many licenses we should have. I think you can take testimony, the council can discuss it amongst themselves, obviously, as you always do, and come up with a number. I didn't feel comfortable just saying it has to be a certain number.
So we'll decide that at the public hearing. Okay. You accept that, Mr. Dixon?
As long as we can have a second reading, even though the second reading is for a document that is not exactly like what the first reading document is, I'm okay with that.
Well, the second. You can amend that, that document, Mrs. Dixon.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to go on, Madam Clerk, if you would read item E2, please.
First reading of proposed amendment to Chapter 153, Licensed Businesses, Section 1A and 1B.
Okay, we've had a chance to look that over in our package and same thing, we'll have a chance to do our research questions and we will have a public hearing on our next meeting on that. Okay, with that being said, the next item is public comment. F, Mr. Wazika, is there anybody who would like to speak for public comment?
If anyone is interested in speaking for public comment, please raise your hand. Raise your hand going once. Raise your hand going twice. Raise your hand three times.
Yeah, I would take, okay, I see Greg LaBosse there has his hands up.
The, I, I, I'm going to get to talk at public comment this time because even though that we, we haven't discussed it, the item C3 that we tabled, or not necessarily tabled, but, but didn't take any action on that. I need to say that the people along in that area are still against any proposed use of that, of that property up there for, and I've got tons of emails, tons of phone calls, et cetera. And because it's on the agenda, I'm able to make a public comment on that. It's, and personally, I didn't support it last time and, and I won't support it again should it come before us in, in the next number of weeks. That's it, that's my comment.
Mr. Gorham, can I, can I respond to that?
Absolutely, go ahead, Mr. Wazika.
I guess you can.
All right, Mr. LaBosse, be advised and the residents out there, this will not, will not come forward again. During our due diligence of researching this, we got this late, we worked on it, we got it onto the agenda, we kept working. There will not be another attempt at this because that is, there's zoning issues involving it, so it will not be going over there ever. This is a dead issue, it's done over there.
Great, well, thank you for that clarification, I'm sure, I feel very comfortable with that and very, very happy here, as well as I'm sure the people in that area do too, so.
And I just, on that, I did also receive a lot of emails and there was so much confusion on it. The intention was not to put a compost, there's so much misinformation going out on, on Facebook and so have your social media like usual, but anyway, it's a done deal, it's dead, so you people will be happy around it, all right? So, Miss Dixon has her hand up?
Yes, since I'm allowed to comment. I too received many, many emails. There were questions that I raised about the zoning for that particular area and I'm glad to see that it has been taken off this agenda and future agendas. But I do want to mention that Mr. McGee's, I would say, heart is in the right direction in which he was looking for ways to save the town money and we hope that he will continue to do that because it's very important to us, but this was not the right application for that particular place. So thank you for looking into the zoning and making a decision, thank you.
Okay, thank you, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, we have a second.
I second the motion.